I'd like to call this meeting to order. First order of business is that I need a motion to go into work session, I mean to go into closed meeting. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following. Discussion concerning a prospective business or industry of expansion or existing business or industry required. No previous announcement has been made of the business or industry interest locating or expanding its facility in the community. And that's Project 201-4006. Need a motion?
Second.
Have a motion and a second with the clerk, call the role.
Sure.
County Administrator.
Supervisor Crean.
Aye.
Supervisor Biggs.
Aye.
Supervisor Gabriel.
Aye.
Supervisor Tutt.
Aye.
Supervisor Perkins.
Aye.
Chair Brown.
Aye.
Seven hours.
We're now in closed meeting.
Now we'll go back. If you need it. Need a motion to go out of work session.
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. Would you please call the role?
Mr. Crean.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tutt.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Aye.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia requires the certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting in which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, considered by the Board. Do I?
Senate.
Have a motion and a second with the clerk, please call the role.
Mr. Crean.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs. Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tutt.
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, aye. I keep saying thank you, I think you're saying Mr. Jones or Mr. somebody or something. Don't worry about it. Need a motion to go into work session for the following. Be it resolved Board of Supervisors hereby enters into work session for the purpose of discussing the FY 2014-15 budget and a resolution on the state budget. You made a motion, Chris?
I did.
And have a motion and a second with the clerk, please call the role.
Yes, Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Perkins.
Aye.
Mr. Tutt.
Aye.
Ms. Gabriel.
Aye.
Mr. Crean.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman.
We're in work session.
Mr. Chair, the first item for the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget, we do not have anything formally prepared for you this evening. I believe we do have the PowerPoint presentation if you need to refer back to it from the budget presentation back on March 3rd. But this is mainly an opportunity this evening for the Board to discuss thoughts, concerns, issues with the budget and an opportunity to ask questions if you have any regarding the proposed budget.
Board members, okay.
Yeah, I had some kind of questions and thoughts. One of the initiatives that you mentioned in the budget is that were not, that was requested but not able to fund was the master plan study for Parks and Rec and Library Facilities. Do we have an estimated cost on that?
I believe it was about, went at about $60,000, Carol, $30 for each.
I thought it was $60 for each.
Angie scrambling. $60,000 is a number, but I can't remember if that was both of them or for each one, but we can get that answered pretty quickly.
Okay.
And that's actually something that's been requested the last couple of years and we've not been able to include it.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that's stuck out to me because it's something that we always, that we as Board have tended to play lip service to, that we care about recreation in this county. It's the second item on our bullet points of things that we care about and yet we're not doing a whole lot there. And so at least if we could start thinking about planning for the future and maybe if it is $60,000 total, then, you know, I think there's probably some places around here, I mean, I could suggest some places, then we might be able to find that money within the existing budget. If it's 120, then it might be a little bit different, but so I'd be interested in seeing what's going on there.
They're huddled around now. 30 each, I was, it's 60 total.
60 total, okay.
Well, we both had 60, we just couldn't remember which piece.
Okay.
60 total.
Well, that's something I'd like to talk a little bit about if we might be able to do that, to find that $60,000 elsewhere.
Give me Ben.
Sorry. If you have any suggestions, I can offer some suggestions or we could talk about. I don't know if this is a priority of the rest of the Board or anything. And I can just keep talking if you want.
Yeah, go ahead, what are they thinking?
Sure. Another thing I noticed is on the total FTEs of the county, we're down about two positions, almost exactly two FTEs from last year. Do you have a sense of what those are? And I'm wondering if those first, those positions last year included the positions that we actually authorized, didn't actually hire. So if we authorized, didn't hire three people last year, so we're actually down five positions because we're adding three people, but we're down two people.
We did not take the people that, the positions that have not been included, we're not taking out because there's still positions in the budget.
Okay.
You know where we dropped, can you see where we dropped to, Angie? It's not ringing a bell right off.
So if those positions were accounted for in the budget and the monies were authorized, what happens to that money?
It just rolled, it winds up in your in carry.
So it's part of the carry.
It falls, well, it falls to fund balance. It's budgeted and if it's not spent, it just falls to fund.
It falls to fund balance. So that $60,000, for example, might be found in that existing fund balance that we didn't spend last year, since this is a one-time expense, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Absolutely. It's like a quiz show, you ask questions and then they huddle and come up with the answer.
Yeah, I don't want to overburden them with questions until I get answers.
The positions in the chart that you're looking at do not include frozen positions. And there was one that became frozen in general services. There was some reorganization with turnover and that kind of thing. And then the other part of the two is related to site attendants. When site attendants who have positions retire or leave or for whatever reason, they're not, that position is turned into a non-classified position, which isn't counted in this chart.
Okay.
They might stay there, but we turn them into non-classified positions.
Okay, okay.
Could you have an extra pen?
Sorry, and so for that, tend to mean for like consolidated type?
Yes.
Things like that, okay. One of the things that we, the Board authorized this past year was opening a new consolidated site down in Allegheny Springs, which I don't believe has been actually opened quite yet. So, and then there was money that was authorized for that as well along with, so that's still in fund balance as well?
Yeah, well, we, that's all been within this fiscal year, so it's been appropriated, but not spent yet.
But not spent, okay.
But not spent as of yet. And we're still, we're still awaiting a final answer on, from the property owner.
Yeah, and so we would need a tenant for that?
Yes.
That site as well, and so that position would go into the, how would that position, so how is that FTE accounted for?
Those FTEs are not classified positions, they're not on our classification plan.
They're all not classified.
Right, so it would be included in the other lump of money.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you. I got all sorts of questions.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
That's fine, keep going. So I noticed that at the beginning of the budget, could you, maybe just, there's a, the classification compensation plan is included at the beginning of the budget. Could you perhaps, could someone perhaps just summarize the changes that are taking place this coming fiscal year? Or is it just a, are we, are there no changes?
There's, there's.
Because I don't remember seeing this document before.
Yeah, it's, we.
In the beginning of the budget. Perhaps it has been there, but.
We didn't have it in town much. We had not, it comes out of Human Resources Office, they procure that and it was not up to date. When we proposed the budget last year, it wasn't the approved budget, but it was not in last year's proposal.
Okay.
And to further that, there's, there are no recommended changes to the current comping class plan, to the proposed comping class plan for next fiscal year.
Okay, so this is just, this is just a reiteration of?
Where we are right now.
Where we are right now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's see, I'm just going through my notes here. Just on a, in the glossary of terms section, which is?
That'll be marked.
Yeah. Well, it's actually just a minor thing, glossary is just misspelled, so it can be.
Seriously?
Yeah.
What's missed?
G-L-O-S-S-A-R-Y. So let's make sure we get that down.
Everybody was, everybody was looking at the numbers and not the words, sorry.
Words are important.
Usually, yes, sir.
That's what historians figure out, that the words matter. Let's see, what else here? Oh, one of the things that we've been talking about and I was looking, it just, it's not actually in the budget, but I was wondering if we could have an update, maybe not even necessarily here, but sometime in the near future is, we've talked a little bit with the Commissioner of the Revenue about proration by personal property. I'd really like to see an update on that because we started talking about that more than a year ago and I, nothing so far, so.
Have not had any conversation with her recently, but have been waiting for some information, which we haven't received yet, but.
Waiting on some information from the Commissioner's office, okay. So perhaps maybe she could, she could visit us sometime and talk to us about what's going on. The other thing too is that I had, I don't know if Carol had, I had asked her some information about crime rates and things like that. Is there, had you gotten, were you able to get any more information than what you, that you were?
I sent you everything.
Everything you have, okay. So we still don't have a sense about kind of trends or anything like that, other than kind of the raw data, which apparently isn't, is just arrest rates, it's not conviction rates or?
Okay, the information that I sent to you from the Sheriff's Office, they're incident rates.
They're incident rates, yeah.
Right, and it's the uniform reporting that the, every law enforcement agency does that is then reported out to the FBI, that they are just incident rates, not arrest rates. Now, the information that I've provided to you for those comparative months from the Western Virginia Regional Jail, those are actually the convictions.
The actual convictions, yeah.
That the inmates that had and why they're in the jail.
Yes, okay, okay, that's fine. But we still don't have, we just have a sense from, the data that you sent us from the Western Virginia Regional Jail, they're all, we don't have a broken by locality or anything like that.
We do not have all of the localities from the jail, no.
Okay, okay. And the, sorry, the data that you sent us specifically is just, we just know how many people from Montgomery County. We don't necessarily know where those convictions, where those incidents took place in which it resulted in.
Whether it was Blacksburg or Pooch'sburg or the county, yeah, we do not.
Okay, okay. All right. Let's see, what else here? Oh, the other question that I had, I'd asked for a little bit of information about before, but just two more things and then I'll let somebody else talk. Some information I had asked about last meeting was about the amount of money that we've been spending on ongoing capital maintenance for existing buildings?
We have not pulled that together yet.
We don't have a sense of that, okay. Is there a place in the current budget that that is, that is discussed, or is it broken down by individual?
It's within the departments.
It's within individual departments, okay. And then, so here, I mean, for example, like, I don't remember seeing it kind of broken down in a line item in, in those individual departments. Is there a place perhaps that, that I missed it?
It would be included in operations for the various departments. It's not broken out specifically as capital maintenance.
Okay. Because as I've expressed before, and this goes back two years, since I've been on the Board, is that my, I have a great concern about make sure that we're keeping up the buildings that we have here. It does us no, no good at all to shortchange existing capital maintenance. And I'm not, not saying we're doing that. I have a worry that we're doing that and I just don't know if we are or not. But if we're shortchanging existing capital maintenance, and that's for all county buildings, including school buildings, then we are digging ourselves a hole that it's going to take a lot of money to crawl out of sometime further down the road. And I want to make sure that we're not doing that. This is a concern, especially now when we don't have, when there's more state money going to the schools and our funding for the schools is flat. But we're still putting the full two cents away that we allocated last year into future capital needs. If we're not taking care of existing capital needs, then that's just not good economic sense, is that, you know, we're, we're basically losing money on that proposition, so. But again, I guess without information, it's hard to make a decision about that. And maybe, maybe that's something that we're going to need to figure out a little bit more about in the coming weeks.
Angie, would, how difficult would that be to pull across the departmental lines?
We can look at that and get some information together. A lot of it is in the general services budget, but spread out in different areas, so we'll have to get that together.
Okay. So for example, just like for the libraries, like is that, is maintenance money allocated to the libraries, it's within their operations or do they, because I remember when I was in library board, they requested from general services, right?
It's through general services, that's correct.
So what departments would it be in their operations? Just for example.
I think it is just in general services, there might be some.
General services and the schools.
Right, and the schools.
And the schools.
Schools separate.
Yeah, they have, they have separate as well, so, because we, we see that and we're, yeah. Okay, thank you. Again, I would, I would like some more information on that, please. And then finally, one of the things I asked about last week as well, and I think there were a couple others that were asking about it, is, and this relates to my questions to Carol earlier on about crime rate and stuff like that, is the Sheriff's request for the new deputies. And do we, do we have any more information about why those three new deputies were requested? Were they to fill a specific role or?
I talked to the Sheriff earlier. Sheriff, you want to come on up and address our questions regarding that? Told him that expects some questions, sir. Sheriff, the first thing I want to say is that we thank you for the service that you provide to this county, you and your deputies and things, do an outstanding job. And with that, you want to start off?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for giving a little glossary here. Project began working through our regional 911 authority and looking at the task that communications operators fulfill today and what communications operators will fulfill in the future. And with the renovation of the old courthouse into the new public safety building, as Chief Crannis, Chief Wilson, and Chief Citizen, as we continue to meet, there were certain matters that, of business that were not being taken care of and we all saw it to some degree, especially with Christiansburg, Blacksburg Tech, with the ability for a citizen to walk in any time of day, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and be met by someone. My initial plan was working with Ms. Brown, was we would leave the front corner of the public safety building open and have it staffed Monday through Friday on a regular business day for the administrative side of the building. However, let's still let the void of the other 18 hours during the daylight time. At that point in time, we had kind of worked with Ms. Brown, with 911 Authority and with our joint advisory committee to the 911 Authority, and we were going to provide a buzz-in and a camera monitor foyer, also providing a safety zone for in the event that someone was being chased and needed immediate protection and give them some order where they could go, to lock the doors in behind them and not allow that person who was pursuing them to come right in behind them and commit a crime there in the public safety building, also protecting the victim of the crime. Then all of a sudden, things kind of started going off in different directions and everybody started saying, well, I need to keep this number of people and I need to keep that number of people. And if you think in context, and I'm not trying to give up anything that I need or keep more than I need, but I have to relate to what Christiansburg or Blacksburg, Virginia Tech are doing with Blacksburg Police Department in its relation to Virginia Tech campus and Virginia Tech relationship right there on campus and the number of people that walk in, you have to look at our number of walk-ins too. We have people walking in every day, have criminal warrant services served, civil process services served. Now, from the very beginning, the 911 center does not want to take criminal warrants. I didn't argue that point. We will maintain and manage our criminal warrants. Blacksburg wants to keep theirs, Christiansburg wants to keep theirs, Virginia Tech wants to keep theirs. And that's fine, because 99% of the time it's their investigators or their officers who are going to the magistrate and giving the probable cause and writing the statements to secure these warrants. However, the ones that, they're not interested in serving and by no fault of their own, because it does lie in the privy of the sheriff to handle these matters, all those papers coming up, we send out notices on our, what I will say, non-violent crimes to people who have committed crimes, who have warrants on them and ask them to come surrender themselves so that we don't have to look for them, wasting time and energy and gas. And you'll believe it, a number of people that come in and say, hey, I understand, I thought it was warranted. Or even if they're given to a private citizen to the self-prosecuting, some of them. And then we have all our civil process that people walk in. And there are some time constraints on when you can and when you can't serve the civil process, as far as me going to the house and physically knocking on the door and disrupting that family. But there absolutely is no timeframe. Our privacy issue, if that person walked in my office and says, I understand I have a civil process or I have a paper, because we typically, we won't tell them, oh, I have warrants for, we'll tell them it's a paper. They come in, understand, understand we have paper. We're looking there in our CADs and RMS to see what we have. And, or we'll have someone right with you. Well, they may go to jail at that point, they may be served with a suit, they may be served with civil process, but it's a subpoena to appear in court. Well, if I don't have someone physically sitting there, then I can't have anyone addressing that issue. Right now I have three office staff on the civilian side. I have one who does nothing but enter and take out civil papers. Now, with that being said, you may think that is a menial job and doesn't require very much, however, it's not. It's all day long, from the moment you get up and she gets in to the moment she goes home. We pick them up from the courts, we enter them into our system and we take them out and we have to justify it to the state. On criminal warrant side, we have to do exactly what the state police wants us to do in regards to our records keeping, our warrant service, our BSN and NCIC entries, Virginia Criminal Information Network Center and Nashville. Anytime we have a person that will, that has fled prosecution or has fled the Commonwealth or is avoiding our service, if it's a felony crime, we consult with Commonwealth Attorney. The Commonwealth Attorney will initial off on that warrant, authorizing extradition, will put in NCIC and if that person is wanted, if that person is encountered by a law enforcement officer anywhere across this United States, first thing they will do is get a hit on the person, they'll verify the hit and within 10 to 20 minutes, depending on the circumstance, the agency that wants the individual has to notify the other agency that has a person that we are wanting here in Montgomery County, Virginia, within 10 to 20 minutes, that we have that physical warrant, not the file drawers in, not, the number of file drawers in, we have it physically in hand and we will extradite that person. And then they give us a period of time, which is generally three to five days, for our warrant staff come in, contact governor's office, get a governor's warrant, make reservations to either flight, drive, or whatever we have to, and go secure that person and bring them back to the Commonwealth of Virginia. Point in hand, just like I, didn't quite work out this way, but there was a double homicide in Pennsylvania. We got the suspect at the Landry truck stop in Montgomery County, no, I'm sorry, it was in Maryland, and Maryland was down here today to interview the person. They have to go through the birth process, that person's been held in our jail, or it could be at Western Regional at this time, I don't know exactly where we're housing. But with that said, he killed his grandmother and grandfather. So each year, the state police comes in and does an audit and they look for serious and minor errors in our entries. Because we enter a person who is armed and dangerous, we have to be able to justify that person's armed and dangerous. Because the law enforcement officer on the other end is told that when they get the hit verification caution, suspect is wanted at Montgomery County, Virginia, whether it's Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Virginia Tech, or Virginia State Police or our agency, that law enforcement agencies will take appropriate protective action for their officers and we better be able to justify it. Now, that's a long story around why I need people at the front door, but I need, what I'd like to do is keep and certify them under the correctional umbrella. And Mr. Muddins has recommended three, but I have to cover 24/7. Can't cover 24/7, 365, three people. And the reason I want to reclassify them and reclassify them as correctional officers is so that they can physically make that arrest. If we have to come in while they take a person to the magistrate's office and we'll just have to do that. But at that point, they can take that person into custody and hold that person until such time as we can relieve them, take them to magistrate's office, or we can pick them up and take them to magistrate's office, or what coincides with Christiansburg or Blacksburg where it happens to be. But keep in mind, every one of these inmates that are in my jail, some of my charge to hold. Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Virginia Tech, Virginia State Police, and then anyone who picks up that's going out, any other place with which I can make arrangements or tell us, we're not going to extradite them. Have I explained that?
Well, I have a couple, okay, I have a couple, couple questions, comments anyway. The comp would authorize you 100 positions that they pay for, right?
Well, you say 100. It, our staffing ratio is one officer for every 1,500.
1,500.
Citizens in Montgomery County.
But I think currently we threw some records I dug out, that you have 100 comp positions currently.
Okay.
And you have 23.5 fully funded county positions. That's the.
Fully funded and fully counted.
County positions, okay. What we're looking for in our conversations is that adding to that number, these are reoccurring monies. reoccurring monies, and we're already cranking the, including the regional jail amount, it keeps going up, the cost of regional jail. And we're trying to look to make sure we manage what little monies that we have coming in. And so when we add personnel, those are reoccurring costs, and so that's the reason why we're looking at this pretty closely. And you've explained to me fairly well, because what I was looking at is that you were sending eight dispatchers to the 911 Authority and you was replacing them with three deputy sheriffs, upgrading one in that spot. But I was wondering about the administrative duties. Currently, the administrative duties are done by civilian people?
Yes, sir. I have one records clerk, one senior officer, one office assistant that sits in the front desk and greets the public as they come in, one that does civil process, and one that does criminal warrants. And then I have, of course, the nine bay dispatchers.
Okay. But, you know, what we're talking about is that if civilian people are doing it, why can't lower classified people fill that position so it wouldn't cost us so much reoccurring monies? And so since you said execute warrants and so forth, is that going to be a little bit of building security too?
It is going to be building security, Mr. Brown, but also it's going to be, it's going to be security for the reputation of the sheriff's office. Because Ms. Brown, and I'm not pointing about her, I'm just saying, if she's not going to do, if she's going to do a hit verification, in other words, if she's going to do a hit notification, I have to do the hit verification. If she is not going to do certain, force to maintain the warrants under the 911 Authority, then I have to maintain the warrants. And I have to put them, put the warrants into the system and take the warrants out. Because if a warrant for a fugitive, someone who has fled the Commonwealth to avoid prosecution, is apprehended in another state, and they come back to Virginia and they're not removed from the system, and all of a sudden, it's found that that person did not commit a crime, and they are still out, or they get out of jail and they're out in the public, that is hit, hit is still in the system, and some multiple law enforcement officers are coming across them, and you can understand the confusion that's created by the way. And I'm not trying to make this long drawn out and anything else. I'm just saying that the potential for liability is enormous if they're not entered and taken out in a common manner. And liability goes up the road.
Right. One quick follow-up question. As close as the Christiansburg Police Department and Chief Sisson, and as close as our building, is it some kind of partnership can be worked between, what I'm looking at, like saving money, Mark's going to hold back some people, you're going to hold back some people, is it, but you guys being across the street, is it some way we could partnership and save a few dollars or something along those lines? And then we might be able to retain more people with half of his and half of yours and so forth, if that's a possibility? I don't know.
And I think we're still exploring opportunity. As a matter of fact, we have some meetings coming up.
Okay.
We're exploring ways that we can do it, facilitate all agencies. And I'm speaking up for Blacksburg, Virginia Tech right now, even with the close proximity of the number of walk-ins that citizens or students are concerned, and see how they can not do it.
That's right. I don't need it.
And how are Christiansburg and Montgomery County will become even closer, because they're literally across the street.
That's right.
I know. How are the citizens of Christiansburg, and whether they're right or whether they're wrong, when they want to see a Christiansburg police officer, they expect to walk into Christiansburg Police Department, citizens in the camp, half the time they don't know where they're going, just to be honest with you. We work for a lot of that also. Many times, our first question is, you know, for Brown or for... Any other board members, I'd be happy to answer any questions I can. If I can't, I'll take the question and go back and try to research.
Matt. I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm still a little unclear.
Still unclear?
Yeah. The way that you're describing it to me, it seems like the help that you need is administrative. But you're talking about them being, needing to be sworn deputies to do building protect, protection within the building?
Well, what we're talking about is data entry or that type of work.
And so, I mean, I think Chief Brown's, Chairman Brown's comment still stands about like, couldn't we reclassify them? And especially if you're still discussing it, that maybe you don't even need that. If Christiansburg's across the street, if Blacksburg and Virginia Tech are going to have a lot of walk-ins and stuff like that, and understandably, right, you know, a citizen of each town wants to see the police officer of their town maybe when they walk in, but this is regional cooperation. I mean, we're going to have to, we're going to have to work together. And it's not that, you know, we need to staff this entirely with our people, because it comes out of our budget. And as, you know, we see with the budget we're discussing right now, there's a lot of competing needs here, you know? So we need to figure out the best way to move forward here.
Let me just say it to you like this. I'm not the first person who's qualified to collect burgers and Burger King in charge of my warrants for people who are wanted out of state. And to reclassify a person lower than a communications operator in my office would just about do that. And I'm not being smart and I'm not being...
Well, then, you still haven't justified why you need the sworn deputies.
Diable deputies, when they walk in, have a criminal warrant on them, Mr. Gabriel, when they walk into the building, the deputy can take them in custody right there immediately.
I understand that.
If it's a civilian state, they call a deputy in from somewhere out in the three-hundred-and-ninety-two square miles of the county.
I understand that, but you still haven't, we haven't, apparently, we still haven't worked out the 911 Authority, who is actually going to be in that building? And you're assuming that it's going to be three Montgomery County sheriff's deputies in that building at all times, and no one from Blacksburg, no one from Virginia Tech, and no one from Christiansburg is going to be there? But you just said that they might be there.
Is everyone might?
So what are we going to do then? That we've already allocated? Because it's not just, you know, it's not just sheriff's deputies and, you know, and salaries and stuff like that. We're talking cars, we're talking equipment, we're talking training and stuff like that. I mean, this is, this is a large recurring cost.
Yes, sir, it is. And I don't know how better to answer your questions other than Christiansburg doesn't want, or Blacksburg or Virginia Tech want my deputies answering for their town ordinances or something in their town. And I don't really know how better to answer your question other than the fact that pretty much a communications operator's position in my office is the lowest paying, other than the cooks and part-time cooks in the jail.
Tommy, let me intervene a minute, I might get us to end. What happens is, what he's saying is that anytime a citizen in Blacksburg walks into the Blacksburg Police Department, they want to see a police officer. Anytime they walk into a tech PD, they want to see a tech PD, I mean, a tech police officer. The thing about it is, eight to five, you have most everything covered, but when you have the odd hours and things like this, and you have a person who wants to come in, it's the same thing. If a person wants to walk into Christiansburg Police Department to file a complaint, or they chased by their boyfriend up in there, and the same thing, when you come to the sheriff's department, just like a lot of times when a citizen goes to a Blacksburg police office and says, "Well, I got assaulted in McCoy, I'd like to file a report." The first thing they're going to say is that, "When did it happen? What happened yesterday?" Well, you need to go to the sheriff's department where it has proper jurisdiction. And is that sort of clearing things up a little bit to work?
No, I understand this. I just, I don't, I still don't understand, other than, you know, Sheriff Witt saying, it's very understandably, I'm not, I'm not taking anything away from you requesting these positions, but I personally, I don't see the justification for, for these three positions in what, what the sheriff has said. If I am voted down six to one, that's fine. But I was, I'm just trying to get a better understanding. And I mean, I think I understand what he's saying now. I just don't see, especially if we're talking about staffing specifically within the 911 Center, which is, which requires regional cooperation, then what's the other, other police officers there?
And perhaps I got really defensive on my behalf, and I do apologize for that, because I came up here trying to be very open-minded. And it's very hard to understand from the outside looking in, and it's very difficult to work from the inside out to provide the services that citizens need. And one, one thing I did fail to mention to you is, I did say I wanted to reclassify them as deputy sheriffs. But there will also be certified communications operators as well, because this is the function that the 911 Center will, will be providing for us, is to warrant. They'll do the entries, they say they'll take them out, but if I have the warrants under my control, then the audit is going to be on me. So it makes either more sense for the 911 Center to take all warrants, do all hit verifications, all warrant entries, call the appropriate agency for the appropriate warrant. That makes sense. And then video, not video, but monitor my front door from a monitor out of four-four and the 911 Center after five o'clock. I would need one person for that. But if they're not going to do, if they're, if they're just going to do the entries and then I have to run someone that may not be available up to pull out a warrant from the warrants drawer, or Ms. Brown has to send someone downstairs, which she'll do that. We'll try to work on that, to pull that warrant out and take the warrant back up and say, "Yes, we have a warrant in hand." And then when they say they have the person in custody, us backs a copy of that warrant to that jurisdiction and ask them to hold them for us until such time as we can make arrangements to get them, and we do the same thing for other agencies that, that we arrest people on out of state and such as that. Then it can work that way. But I can't, and I certainly hope this board doesn't put me in a position of being responsible for something I don't have a care over. And I don't have my men and women adding those into the system and taking those out of the system if I'm going to be held accountable.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, the description wasn't exactly clear when you said administrative functions, and probably if we had had some more explanation about security, warrant service, et cetera, because when you start looking at, dispatchers are entering and taking them out right now, right?
Entering and taking them out when the person is arrested.
Right. They're doing that right now. So there is a civilian person doing it, but...
There is a civilian person doing it, sir.
Okay. But you're going to grow that position to be able to make the arrests, process the person if they walk in and so forth, right?
Yes, sir. And it's all reality, if we had it covered by office civilian staff twenty-four seven, which they're going to have to have them certified as communications operators at a very minimum. And they're going to have to go through the V-CEN training and the retraining and all of that. And we'll have to have a terminal at that front office and in that warrants office to do the entries and take them out immediately, because phone calling back and forth and messaging back and forth, or whatever the case may be, there is going to be something lost in the translation of the message, and someone is going to be left out there who is, should be out of the system or should be in the system, and it's going to be a critical error.
Mr. Chairman?
A few things. These are good questions.
Good, bad, indifferent, I'm here for you.
I have a different perspective in regards to, because believe it or not, I have had clients who say, "I got this note on my door that says I've got a warrant, and they're calling me at home at six or seven o'clock at night saying, 'What do I do?'" And I say, "You really want to turn yourself in, because you'll get a better chance of bonding out, so go down to the sheriff's department and turn yourself in." I've also had the, and I hadn't thought about this when we were, who kind of is there to greet the public at Blacksburg, at Christiansburg, and here? When someone comes after hours, where do they come? They come back, that back door to the dispatch, to your office, they come over to Christiansburg. And when I was looking at the 911, I wasn't thinking about, I was thinking, "Hey, where do I have 911?" And so I buzz in, I talk to the communications person who's doing 911. Sometimes they say, "Wait a minute, we're dealing with the situation, you're going to need to wait." I hadn't thought about those things when I was thinking about 911. I appreciate your answers in regards to that. And like I said, I have a little bit of different perspective, because I'm in and out of the police departments, I guess, more than my fellow board members. But that's, I kind of looked at those positions, I said, "Well, they're all going over, this is going to be some real serious savings." I guess I was thinking along the lines of, Matt, and I was like, "Well, why are these positions being requested?" And at the same time, you're making them deputies, is there any way to keep them at a communications level? Or do you see what I'm saying, instead of...
Well, I think there's some skips and some worries there. And yes, I can keep them as communications. The bottom line is, I can. But if I keep my communication system operators working twenty-four seven at my front door, and Ms. Brown has twelve sitting upstairs doing the same job, making ten thousand dollars more a year, how long do you think they're going to be sitting at my front door? And how often do you think I'll be retraining communications operator? I could keep them, while they can come in the same building and go up three flights, get off and make more money. And I don't think that that budget has necessarily been approved, although, matter of fact, I go ahead and put them on once and not laughing, laughing at myself for what I just said, not laughing at the budget. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
Now, it's just one question. Your nine dispatchers, are they going to go to the 911 station? Well, that's questionable. Would, Mr. King, just to be honest with you, because we have some that have absolutely no interest in going, and will probably look somewhere outside the county to go to another 911 center. Probably simplest way to say that is every one of them will be eligible to apply for a position in the 911 system, as they will with Blacksburg, Tech, and Christiansburg PD. I think it's a fair, like I said, I think that's what we went about with the Western Virginia Regional Jail, combining my emergency correctional positions there, that I have my jail and every one of them. As I hire them as emergency correctional officer, I would tell them and give them a notice that within the timeframe that was, like, building up towards the opening of that jail, that they would be, that they were being hired into emergency correctional positions, and when I lost those inmates to the Western Virginia Regional Jail, therefore I would also lose my emergency correctional positions, and they would be able to apply for and seek a position there. And all of them did, and many of them have come home. And I say, "Come home, come back to work for me."
I appreciate that. Okay, moving, thank you.
Please excuse my little bit of anger. I think I was a little out of way with you tonight, Mr. Gabriel, I apologize, but not a very sensitive about what I do.
It's important stuff.
It is. It's true. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Okay, moving right along, other questions, comments? Oh, Ms. Carroll has some numbers for us.
Yeah, Andrew's busy running some numbers so we can pull some information for you related to maintenance. And so what we have is primarily all the maintenance monies and functions are handled in the Department General Services, although there are two maintenance positions in Parks and Recreation, thanks to this board, and some funds there. The total of both of those costs, now, we've excluded things like maintenance contracts for the elevators, and where there are various types of contractual things that we have maintenance, so we excluded those, but did include the maintenance positions. The total amount between General Services and Parks and Recreation is six hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. In addition, I just remind the board that some time ago, you set aside a reserve, a facilities and maintenance reserve, and with the increase in the twelve cents for debt service, with that windfall, you increased the amount in the facilities and maintenance reserve to one point four million dollars.
And how much have we put in that over the past year, since that, that windfall?
Pardon me?
How much have we put back into that reserve? I mean, that's a city reserve.
It currently has one point four million dollars.
Okay. But we, for example, in this current budget, we have no money going into that reserve. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
Mr. Chairman, could we take just a couple of breaks?
Yes, we can take a couple of minute break.
Thank you.
We'll take a, we'll take a five minute break. Okay. Well, the break's over. Let's reconvene.
You can do that.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, do you have questions since we're over at you?
Matt covered several of those questions at this point in time. Now, and so I would defer to any other board members that've got any other questions of the staff.
Ms. Biggs?
Okay, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the proposed school board budget and make sure that I had my math right. Okay, I understand, you know, we, like I think I announced at the last meeting, that the new money that we expect is being spent on the county side of things, and at that point, we're still short. And the state money that's coming to the schools, the 2.4 million, I want to make sure I have this right. Some of that 2.4 million has to be spent on certain things that the state is requiring. And I have down like the increase in the VRS contribution rate, the increase in the VRL, health insurance credit contribution rate, the increase in the VRS group life insurance contribution rate, the VLDP cost for new hires, and that's involved with the hybrid plan with the VRS, and then the long-term disability coverage for VRS hybrid employees. Well, when I added those up and I subtracted it from the 2 million, I get basically that after that money is spent on those things that are required, that that leaves the school board with $829,000 of money that they could spend. Is that correct?
That's a question for the school board.
Can you guys help? Is that correct? That would be all the new money that you would have for next year?
Do you want to give a minute? I can get that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, I just added it from, you know, page 11, the things that I thought maybe were the state mandated, things that you had to spend it on. I was trying to figure out, because something that concerns me is that we all know on our own budgets how difficult things have been with prices going up for special utilities and gas. So things keep going up, and government has to pay the same kind of things that we do. That concerns me in that, you know, I'm not sure how the school system can operate if they have $829,000 of new money when we're talking about ongoing expenses. That's not talking about anything else with the, what they have listed that they would like to do. So I just wanted to bring that to our attention tonight to make sure that if I was on the right page, or am I not on the right page, or I need to know what I'm thinking about here.
Mary, they also have, this isn't a state requirement, but they also have increased costs because of the new schools being online this year as well.
Right. I didn't include any of that. I'm just, yeah, this is just the basic that looked like to me they had to take out the 2.4 million. So they'd have $829,000 for any other things that they might need. And I guess that sort of goes back, I think I might have been saying this the last couple of years, you know, I know that we had to do things for capital, and I understand that. But, you know, I've also mentioned that we need to be doing things in operation budgets for both sides of the, for the county and for the schools because things go up and you need to plan for them.
The number I calculated was $854,471.
Oh, you have some extra. Okay, 854, and what was the last part?
Um, 854, 471.
Okay.
I did not take out the estimated decrease in our federal revenue of $50,744, which may be the difference.
Okay. So that would be, that would be the money that you would have as new money that could be spent on anything that you have in your budget. That would be it, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But also say that since we didn't get the state increase in our salaries, the $500,000 from last year, it wasn't renewed this year, part of that's taken up by that.
So you would subtract the $500,000 out of the 854?
And that would be new money.
Okay.
Well, it is, the 500 is in our base budget, so we're not adding it as new money, but it's not, it wasn't refunded by the state.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not surprising. So are we still talking about you'd have 854,000?
Yes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Can I, before you leave, can you just remind us, what's the federal decrease? It's $50,000, but what is it? Is it Title I money or?
It's mostly specialized money.
Specialized money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. I think, didn't you have something?
I had one, but Craig answered it earlier.
Okay, okay.
I talked to Craig about it.
Okay.
And one more thing I'd like to, as Mr. Gabriel brought up about the park and the wreck, I think we need to investigate that really. $60,000 to do what needs to be done.
Thank you.
And I also like the proration, because I think we've been on this topic forever about the proration of taxes, because I know that, you know, this, we need to, we need to get an answer about it, we need to decide if we're going to do it, and just, you know, if we're going to do it, fine. If we're not, fine. But I can tell you that cars sit there the whole time not being taxed, and mine was one of them because I bought it in July.
I'll let the Commissioner of Revenue know, we're waiting to hear from him.
As far as, and I guess since we're in a work session, the $60,000, all I think I've said at most of meetings, I'm not thrilled about looking at studies. I would like to know what's involved in the study to come up with a better idea. And then also, there's good reasons to do the studies, and I think the self-insurance study ended up saving us approximately, if not on wood, about $330,000 and maybe more.
I hope so.
May, knock on open wood. So there's sometimes a really good reason to do a study, but I would want to know why the staff doesn't have the, either the resources or the abilities to be able to do both of the studies regarding the library and as well as Parks and Recreation.
For the library study, since it's a regional library, we should ask Floyd County to contribute at least a portion to it.
Further questions or further comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you, all of you, I sent an email out earlier in regards to a resolution regarding the General Assembly. Marty has helped me clean it up a little bit. I have a copy of that. I'm sorry, it's not a digital copy, but it's a, in regards to the resolution regarding the budget, and the General Assembly has not passed a budget at this point in time, and they're supposed to come back sometime next week. At this point in time, it seems to be that the budgets are very, very close, with the exception of the Medicaid expansion with the Affordable Care Act. And in regards to that, both sides may have some very valid points on why they don't want it expanded, but for us as a governmental entity, I would like to pass this resolution in regards, once we come out of work session, to encourage that. And I look at this in a very maybe different perspective than some adult look at it. One, I was not in big favor of the government shutdown Republican side, and I'm a Republican. I didn't think it was the right thing to do because whether you like it or not, the Affordable Care Act passed when the Democrats had control of the House and Senate. But the Republicans said, we're going to defund it, and that we're going to shut the government down. I didn't think that was the right thing to do. I don't think that tying the state budget to the expansion of the healthcare is the right thing to do. To my knowledge, none of the bills have passed in regards to whether it's, a lot of different aspects of the Affordable Care Act and how it will work here, and whether you call it Obamacare, Affordable Care Act, I'm happy to refer to it in either terms with whoever. I think that it needs to be obviously studied, and I'm happy for them to go and debate about it at special sessions, but I would ask that we pass this resolution when we come out of work session, and I'm happy to discuss it now during the work session.
Do you want to discuss it now, or do you want to discuss?
Well, we had those two items, and I think we got past the questions on the budget and moving to number two, resolution on the state budget, so I think we can...
Do you want to discuss it now?
Yeah, go ahead and discuss it now, since he has it on his work session. It's on, oh, it's on revise.
It's on the revised.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
Does anybody else? I would be, I would be happy to support this resolution personally, but I will not vote for it as is unless the provision about the Medicaid expansion is taken out. And the reason for that is, is that whether to include it or not is a, whether to include Medicaid expansion in the current state budget is a political position, whether you take it out and you don't deal with it, or whether you include it and you do deal with it. And from, by taking the House of Delegates, the Republican-controlled House of Delegates position in total contrast to the bipartisan Senate provision, which includes Medicaid provision, which also the governor has said he would sign, one could make the argument that it's actually the failure to deal with the desire to take out the Medicaid provision that is indeed the sticking point in it, so it's the Republican House of Delegates that's holding it up. Now, you could make, as Mr. Tuck just did, the opposite argument as well, that it's the Democrats. So my suggestion is simply that we ask them to indeed do their job and pass the budget. They need to deal with this as they see fit. It's a problem. I'm not saying that this isn't the sticking point, it is absolutely the sticking point, but it's a political question. It's not a simply good government position, it's a political discussion that needs to be had in Richmond, and they need to figure out how to deal with it. So I would be in support of passing this resolution without that statement. If it's in, I would vote against it.
Okay, Mary?
Well, I feel the same way that Matt did, and I earlier emailed Supervisor Tuck to let him know that, because we're not, this, to me, you're telling the General Assembly how to go about doing their job, and what we're really asking is, please do your job as it relates to local government. And I think we have every right to ask that, and that they, you know, pass a budget so that we can get on with ours, but I have reservation about telling them what to do with the Medicaid expansion, like how they should handle that. My other concern is, I have been talking to some citizens out in the community that are very upset that the session was a long session and this, this whole thing wasn't resolved, because every time they go back, we pay for them to go back. We pay their travel, we pay their lodging, and we pay their meals. And so, you know, when we hire them to do the job that they do for us, then it seems to me that, you know, you try to do it in a timely manner. And so by taking these two things apart, we're sort of giving them, you know, like, oh, hey, you know, do one thing, then do the other. But I see it more, you know, besides all that, I see it more that we need to ask them to do their job and get the funding to us, and I like to take the Medicaid out of it
Well, let me weigh in on this a little bit. They talk about politics. I don't think the General Assembly is going to listen to us anyway. I think it's just a waste of time, because we've been on their case about school funding, about different other things, and it seems like it's just right on across their head. And, but, when you look at this resolution, whether it be politics or not, I mean, I don't think the General Assembly is going to look at the kids out there and say, those are Republican kids, those are Democrat kids, we're not going to pass this. All we want, all I want is for them to do their job, to pass a budget so we can get some, go on with what we need to do. And however, they handle Medicaid, Medicare, Obamacare, whatever you want to call it, that's up to them. It's just that if we can get them focused on passing a budget, and if one of them wants to take it off the plate, that's fine, but I don't think we direct it one way or the other. There's, I'm sure there's some people out there in our audience tonight really appreciate the Affordable Care Act, there's some out there saying, but hell, it's going to cost me a leg and an arm and so forth. But what, whatever it may be, we just need to, I think a resolution to encourage them to pass a budget is a good idea, but not with the, trying to decouple the Medicaid issue.
And perhaps, and I brought copies, this is the second letter I've received where I had to, after I was promised that I was going to be able to keep my healthcare, this is where I've had to give up my healthcare. You feel free to, I made copies. This is just a reminder that I've got basically that the policy I had is going to be no longer.
I think, uh...
Have you got enough? I think I made enough copies.
Yeah.
Any one more?
Any more?
Yeah.
Okay, we got it.
So I understand that I have a very different perspective, and I think, I don't know about Todd, whether he, his insurance got canceled or not.
It's changed.
In regards to that, but I, we tell the legislature what to do all the time. We go down there and beg them to do what we want them to do. We beg them to say, hey, listen, give us the right to be able to tax cigarettes the same way that towns can tax cigarettes. Let's be able to have a meals tax the same way the towns can do a meals tax. Just make it across the board where we can do the same things that they can. We tell them what to do all the time. And I truly believe that if this stays a part of the budget, we're going to be at an impasse for a long time. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe that folks will be able to work things out. I hope they will. But the reason I put that aspect in it is because, to my knowledge, none of the other underlying things, some of the things that were going to be done with the Affordable Care Act, like when they said, hey, Chris, you're going to be able to keep your health insurance, I guess people hadn't fleshed those things out enough. And I want to make sure in Virginia, if we're going to do this and the expansion, that we're going to know what we're passing, that it's not going to be a shoe from the hip, okay, well, we're going to pass this, and then we'll read about the bill later. And so from my perspective, I guess I look at it a little bit differently. No one else here has had their insurance canceled, so I guess that's why I look at that.
You haven't either, it's just been changed.
No, well, actually, I have.
During the last two months, we have transitioned members with the January first renewal date to individual policies.
Right, but I haven't been able to transition to individual policies, and I have until October the 1st of 2014 to have my own separate policy.
Okay, and that, okay, I mean, it just doesn't, it doesn't say that here, I'm sorry.
My first policy is canceled. Now, this is a second special alert that I've received recently, I just pulled this one up. But, so I guess I have, you know, they're offering to be my agent here in the Virginia State Bar, but it was, if you look at non-renewals at the very top subject for solo prop health plans, and that was me.
So you chose not to go with their individual, I mean...
I can't go with their individual.
I don't even know why we're talking about this.
Yeah, why are we?
What does this have to do with Medicaid exchange? Medicaid happened in the 1960s. I mean, we know what Medicaid is. I mean, if you want to argue that, that's fine. The Affordable Care Act is absolutely, it's on the books. We've already forfeited, Virginia's already forfeited $250 million this year. You know what $250 million would do for this state? Some of it could go to public education. If we just took that free money, some of it could go to public safety. But we decided, and that's fine, that's a political position that was made when, you know, the previous governor was in charge, not to do this. All I'm saying is that every argument I'm making and every argument you're making is a political position that has no business in a public document that we as a united board would want to send to the Virginia State Legislature. If you want it, if you want it to be a bipartisan document, that's fine.
No, I, you know, Matt, I want it to be a correct document. I want to get something done actually in Richmond, and maybe with the hopes that we will be coming together and say, look, pass the budget, and then deal with the expansion on its own basis. Make sure we know what we're doing this time when it goes through.
Absolutely, we shouldn't spend, the legislature shouldn't spend 30 days dealing with personhood bills and transvaginal ultrasound bills and stuff like that, that the House of Delegates spends every session doing first, and then for the last 10 days or 15 days, they start, they start talking about the budget. Yes, there's lots of things they should change.
Well, so right now, this is what's holding up the budget, not any of those other...
On the House of Delegate side, not on the Senate, not on the government side, two-thirds of the people who are required to pass this want the Medicaid... of the people who are required to pass this want the Medicaid expansion. So, one could certainly argue that decoupling it is exactly what's holding up.
Well, here's the thing, if it was wrong for the Republicans to shut down the federal government, isn't it wrong for the Democrats to say?
I'm saying the Republicans are the ones shutting down the government right now. They are absolutely. Unless you're saying that the House of Delegates are some sort of dictatorship, that should maybe the Senate and the governors go along.
No, but here's the thing, if you're going to pass.
You guys can go home, we'll be here.
I'm getting ready to call a timeout or a tie-off or something like that.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Well, Mr. Tuck, you know, it sounds like there's support for your idea to ask them to do the budget and I don't know if there's, you know, I don't know which way everybody's feeling, but would you be willing to still have your resolution go forward without that little piece in it or not?
Well, here's the thing, I'd like to see if it votes up or votes down, then if somebody wants to change it.
Okay.
Hey, look, that's, that's, we're a body, we can, we can look to change it. If you, the majority thinks that that needs to be done, but I can at least say, hey, look, we do have some deadlines that we have to deal with. I would like to have, but it looks like we don't need that, to worry about that as much, I don't know.
I'd like to say one thing, Chris, I appreciate you and I think it'll stay in there so legislation knows, everybody knows, that's what's holding us up. Get a grip, do your job.
Well.
Okay, I'm it.
It's a very deep subject. The thing that bothers me is that, I believe, on the surface of it, that the House of Delegates members know what the Medicaid expansion is all about. Hasn't it been studied, hasn't it been looked at? Or is it just that, well, we got this Medicaid there and we're going to deal with it, but we can't deal with it in the budget because we don't know what's in it. Now, excuse me, but we've got a lot of very bright, brilliant people in that House of Delegates and if they have not studied it, if they don't know what's in it, how in heaven's name can they say no to it? I mean, that's to me, it didn't make sense to me that they were going to sit there and they've been talking about it for 60 days and it, you know, I agree, we study things to death and sometimes it's good, like you said, but I will tell you this, if they hadn't already studied this, then they're lacking something and they're the ones that we ought to be going to, to say, okay, look, how long does it take to study? How many studies does it take to study? It's sort of like, how many minutes does it take to change a light bulb? I think it's just, oh, women, excuse me, I'm sorry.
That's right, be politically correct.
To me, it, I'm sorry, it makes no sense to me that as of the end of this budget session, they don't know what's in it. The whole point is, there are, the members of some, of one party just don't want it. And, in the House of Delegates. And the members of the other party do want it. So, as far as I'm concerned, I don't even think Medicaid ought to be mentioned because I think we all know, if it hadn't been in the newspaper, everything I know about it, I read in the paper, you know how Will Rogers was, he said the same thing, you know. If I can read it in the newspapers, by golly, I think the legislators can read it in the newspaper, but then, I'm just a weary former teacher and board member. But anyway, no, I don't like it, I don't want it in there, I don't think it ought to be. All we need to do is say, pass the budget, would you please?
Mr. Greed.
Yeah, you know, we've asked on hundreds of occasions over the last 12, 13 years that I've been on this board and basically we always ask for exactly the same thing and basically also everybody up there knows exactly what we want them to do. I mean, we can send 14 truckloads and empty it right inside their office and they'll do the same thing with it that they did with one that we sent them last week and that's put it on the trash. So, I don't see where sending something to them is going to do a whole lot of good, but if y'all want to do it, I'm willing to do so. But I don't see where we can even expect to get any reply from them over and above what we have asked them to do when we have done it with them here and we ask them, tell them what we want them to do when they get back up there and it just doesn't happen. You know, we're the little people down here, kind of reminds me of where I'm at in this county. I've got, without a doubt, more poor folks in my district than any other district in this county. I don't doubt that, and there ain't one, not one bit. And I can ask them for something and get better response than I can if we send something to Richmond. Ain't that just a fact? So, you know, we can spin our wheels all we want to, but I don't think we're going to get much traction.
But, Mr. Greed, you have made a lot of sense and so forth and I can go either way. I think we spent probably 35, 40 minutes on the subject that it's going to, if it goes there, it's going to go in one ear and go out the other when we send it to legislators and things like this, that they've, I've been a member of this board over six years and they have never listened to us and I don't know why they're going to start because we sent them a resolution. So, however you, we voted up or voted down or whatever, when we get out of work session, it's fine with me. I just think we need to get on with business. Comments and questions or whatever, we're still in work session before we go out of work session.
I want to ask a question.
Yes, ma'am.
It says here, new business subject, resolution establishing an advertised real estate tax rate and advertised FYI 2014 budget.
Yep, that's next.
I know, that's outside of work session, but I want to ask this, with all these questions that we've asked tonight and we need to get more information, should we be doing that?
That's on the agenda if the board wants to take action, it's not, we're not asking that you take action. We did say that hopefully when we finish the work session tonight, you'd be ready to develop an advertised rate and budget, but that's, that's totally the board's call.
Because we haven't even gotten to the question about the tax rate yet.
Well, I don't know, just correct me if I'm not, but that's probably a part of the budget talks, tax rates, and we can sort of include that, at least, I'm not an attorney, but I, my legal opinion would be, we're talking budget, we're talking money and we could get that in and discuss that too. Now, I'm not practicing law without a license now, that's just my opinion. Okay, let's talk about it.
Let's talk about it, that's what I want to, well, where are we on this budget and are we all in agreement that there'll be no taxes or the tax rate's going to remain the same or do we want to have a tax?
I know the, you had said something about maybe delaying it or something. The thing about it is that we know our commissioner revenue, our treasurer, and getting all those things out, they have some critical deadlines and so forth and if we, and I think we have to advertise for a week, what would we have for a week and then we have to advertise again, I guess the budget and the?
We can approve until a week after.
A week after the hearing. Okay, so, there's some time constraints that we have to work with and under to make sure that our treasurer, our commissioner, whoever sends those tax tickets out, that they're not in violation or we don't have to, I mean, we can extend that date past June 15 or something along those lines. June 5, I mean, yeah, we could extend that date, but I don't particularly like to get into doing all that.
Well.
But it's whatever the board's pleasure.
This is March 17.
We need a motion to get out of work session.
No, you're still talking.
We're still talking about, we figured that establishing the tax rate falls in under the 2014 budget discussions.
We've also got, as the resolution says, we've got, we've got to get everything past 14 days, they've got to be able to get the tax tickets out. June 5 is tax day, so that's two weeks prior to that, so we've got a series of deadlines that we're facing and if for some reason that pushed back past that June 5 deadline, that's going to affect our collections because part of what we count it on is that money coming in on that date, the money flows in, so if we push it back and our tax date is July 5 instead of June 5, we're affecting our county's budget and how much money we have to deal with and we're cutting our budget basically. So, by putting it off.
How long is putting it off? Seven days? I mean, what's the issue? Seven days? How many weeks between now and May 15?
The problem I see with it is that it makes us look exactly like the legislators we just talked about.
No, we're not talking about.
We've got a job to do, they've got a job to do and we need to get it done.
Well, that's true, but we don't need to be going into it with less than adequate answers unless we want to take the administration's budget and say, okay, that's what we're going to do and that's where we're going and forget the rest of it. Because why are we sitting here asking all these questions? Why are we sitting here talking about all this stuff if we just were going to take the budget as is and go?
Matt?
Just two quick questions, just for clarification for the audience especially. What were, if we were to pass this resolution here, we would just be, we would actually be setting the actual budget, correct? We would just be capping the total amount of the budget so we can move monies around within that amount.
That's correct. If you adopt that resolution, and that's the reason we left the numbers blank, is whatever you advertise or you pass in the resolution that you want to advertise, you can't go above that, but you could adopt below that.
So, and that's the same for the tax rate as well? Is that if we were to advertise a set tax rate, we are not voting for that tax rate?
That's correct.
We're simply capping the ceiling at which we could.
Well, I know that, it's been going on for how many years now? 17 years I've been here doing the same thing over and over and over again and I don't know, you know, I just think that when we have a situation like this and we're asking questions.
I'm not sure what questions haven't been answered by the staff, I thought they were able to provide us, we're not making a budget decision, like, let's say on the parks and rep, $60,000 or $30,000 for a library study, we're not deciding that tonight.
What we're deciding tonight is there will be no tax increase.
Well.
There will be, I'm not talking about the inner workings of the budget, I'm saying, what we're saying is there will be no tax increase, so there's no additional money coming to anybody and probably you're going to get a lot less and the budget is going to be X number of dollars, then we're going to come back and we're going to talk about, well, here's what we do.
Well, one, I haven't heard any final decisions regarding budget, but you're right, we wouldn't be taking any more money in, in regards with the tax increase, but there's no, I haven't heard any board member say, well, we're going to cut the school funding, it's going to be level funding, but I haven't heard any board member say that they were planning on cutting the schools' budget. You had said that folks are going to be getting less, I haven't heard that from any board members, but to me, I guess.
Well, if you don't put any inflation rate in it and you're not raising taxes, where are you?
Well, I guess it's a, one, if you look at, the school board got about $2.5 million from the state this year and that's the approximate amount. On the county side, we had roughly, it looks like the funding numbers were a million and a half and grew. Of that, $800,000 got eaten up by a jail bill and then we had, we had to deal with some of the other issues in regards to the budget and it looks like the staff has been able to do that through funding savings or a couple of hundred thousand dollars in collections in regards to that. So, I guess what I'm asking you is what are the questions that have, as far as the tax rate, haven't been answered? Because I thought the staff had to answer that and what is going to be the difference in a week?
I'm saying some of the things that have been asked tonight, people have said, okay, we might like to have a little more information on some, in some of these areas. For instance, for instance, what about the provision of the property tax? I mean, there are some things there that are not really settled, but if we had to do that within, that's kind of a tax increase.
Yeah, but if it was successful, that could bring in some additional revenue.
Additional revenue?
Yeah.
But at the same time, we've been working on that and Matt and Mary has been working on that, she's for years?
Well, it's been, yeah, it's been going on for a long time, asking about getting it done.
And I know that Matt has been very vocal in trying to improve this order.
And so, we don't need another week to just ask.
So, I don't know that another week is going to suddenly make it change, but it may change what we've advertised.
Is it, is it some way that, just to interrupt right quick, is it some way that we can extend her date, a cutoff date, says we would like for you to come to the board at particular date, whether it's June, July, whatever, to let us know the progress? If we wait until she picks a date, I don't think she's going to ever come. But if we extend that date to her and invite her to come and bring us up to date, if it's June, if it's July, I mean, I think that puts the monkey on her back to get up here.
I think it's always been that way, on her back.
But if we wait for her to volunteer and come and bring us up to date, then I think we're going to wait here for a long time. But if we put that deadline date out there, I think it puts more pressure on.
I don't know, go ahead and do what you want to do.
My only other question.
You've got another question before we go out?
If, like a miracle happened and let's say we got more new growth money than we thought or windfall money or whatever, will this board be alerted to that and be alerted to the fact that, you know, if there's, there are things that need to be done, that we would have some say so with what happens with that money? For instance, like if in fact we go out and we, I realize the budget's a number and things can be switched around, but if we go out and there is not a tax increase and we feel like, you know, there are some needs, whether they be on the school side or county side or whatever, and we have some new revenue that comes in, can the board be alerted so that we can do something with that if we need to?
I think we usually do.
Yeah, that's right.
If we have new revenues that come in, we have to have them appropriated to.
I mean, they just won't go into a reserve fund like you would say, oh, by the way, we got $500,000 that we weren't expecting.
The, every time there's been a reserve, or what, just like last year, they have brought that before the board with the staff recommendation and we have said that, okay, put this over in schools, put this over in capital. It is never done, to my knowledge, without this board being made aware of it or saying yea or nay one way or the other.
Yeah, well, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about what we on the board do. We have always before asked the administration to give us some, oh, I don't know, some alternatives. This time, and I have no, I have no qualms with just saying, okay, we're just going to pass what the administration says because this is the best estimate that's out there for funding that's available, so it's not anything that I mean bad toward the administration because I hope they don't choose it, look at it, but in the past, we have said, you know, but if everybody on this board is absolutely certain that they don't want any other money that comes from taxes, then sure, go right ahead and do what we're going to do tonight. What's on the second thing? Because it's useless to sit around and ask questions and talk about what we can do except rearranging a few things within the budget.
Okay, we're all ready to go.
I'll move it away. One second.
Okay, you, anybody, okay, we have. We have a motion, a second, we go out of work session. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Todd, I did.
Mr. King. Mr. King.
Ms. Peters?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Gabrielle?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye. Next item on the new business is, is, subject A, establish and advertise real estate tax rate in FY 2015 budget.
Mr. Brown, I'd like to make a motion establishing the advertised real estate tax rate of ninety cents with a corresponding increase in the budget, so it would be a one cent property tax increase. The purpose of that would be to discuss, since it's setting a ceiling, it's not setting the, the, the formal tax rate, that we discuss what an extra seven hundred thousand dollars potentially could do, both for the schools, but also for existing county. And again, I come back to the thing that's, that's been my mantra tonight, is about capital maintenance, and existing capital maintenance.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, and if I can ask, I'm looking down at staff, if it's a ninety cent tax rate, the total budget amount number would be?
Seven hundred.
If I can read it. One, seven, two, two, seven, four, seven, one, zero.
One, seven, two, two, seven, four.
Seven, one, zero.
Seven, one, zero.
So, if the board, with a motion and a second, it's ninety cents, and it's a hundred and seventy-two million, two, seventy-four, seven, ten, for clarification.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. And I guess there's no further discussion. Will, would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Gabrielle?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
No.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Peters?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? We have four noes and three yeses.
Mr. Chad?
Okay.
I'll move that way, except the administrator's recommendation.
A second. That's the administrator, the administration's recommendation of eighty-nine cents. And you second. Have a, a motion and a second. Is it any discussion?
And can you throw that number out faster than I can dig it up?
It's one, seventy-one, five, seventy-four, seven, ten.
Seven hundred thousand less than the last one.
Yeah.
But it's a long day.
Can you just subtract? Those are two basic things, subtraction and addition.
It's really rough minded.
Yeah, would the clerk please call a roll?
You may or not go discuss it.
Hello?
Mr. Gabrielle?
I think she said she wanted to discuss it.
No, I didn't, I said we're not going to have any discussion.
Oh, yeah, okay, let's back up, and any discussion before we take the vote. Okay, go ahead. Here's a discussion time, I'm sorry.
She, she didn't want to discuss.
Oh, you didn't want to discuss?
I didn't want to discuss, I just said, are we going to have discussion?
Yeah, we can have discussion, sweetheart, we can have discussion.
I think just, let's just move on, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Peters?
No, and I want to say why. I want to say because we have received so many emails today, and because I was asked so many times, was there going to be a public comment time where people could actually comment on, you know, the proposed, you know, tax rate for us to advertise? That, that's why I'm voting no, because I feel like, you know, we, we didn't have that flexibility. So, could you make that part of the record? Thank you.
Ms. Perkins?
It depends on who I want to have as a friend. Do I want the administration, or do I care about you guys?
We're not losing anyone, no matter what.
Neither one.
Either one, no, we're going to remain friends.
You can throw the book at it if you want to, you're not going to lose me as a book.
Actually, I, I don't like it. And, and I'll give you a little explanation to the answer's no. And the reason for that is because I just think that we ought to be looking at some of the needs. There's very little switching around in that budget, and I just face it. I mean, there's almost nothing to switch around. And we're not looking at, well, really and truly, what should we do about schools? What should we do? The needs are out there, and as far as I'm concerned, I think we need, I just thought we needed more discussion about where we were, and what we were doing, and how we were doing it. And that doesn't say anything at all. I mean, I may end up voting for the administration's budget. See, I'm trying to keep my, both sides of the aisle here squared away. But I really do think that, truthfully, by doing what we're doing, we're just doing something right now, just to get it started, just to get it going. And we don't realize there's nothing else we can do. And I think there are some other things that we can do, so, at any rate, my answer's no.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, I'll make a little statement, too. Yep, we've got a whole lot of emails. I've got a lot of personal telephone calls, I've got a lot of personal contacts from the people in the district that I represent. Okay, and ninety-nine percent of those people says, Mr. Brown, we supported you on the two cent, the help school capital, and you said that you wouldn't vote for any taxes in the coming year. And they've reminded me of that. If I could get them to support me on the two cents, and I even took a beating on the twelve when we set money aside to build new schools. But I want to keep my word to those people that it would be, I would vote for zero tax increase, so, yes, for the eighty-nine cent.
We have four yeses, then three noes. The motion carries.
Any other business from the order? Well, I'll tell you what, I'd like to, since we do have some people here, I wish Mr. Meadows would run over his, the meetings.
Absolutely, now, would you take us the resolution afterwards?
Yeah.
With their proposal? There's a lot of folks waiting. And I'm happy to put that off until the end.
Okay.
But just briefly, I did want to mention that we have a number of meetings coming up. Our regular board meeting next Monday, the twenty-fourth. There will be public address at that meeting for folks to, to speak to the board. Also, we have a community conversations meeting that's coming up on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, at Christiansburg High School. That begins at seven o'clock. We also have a special meeting for a public hearing on the advertised tax rate and advertised budget that was set this evening. That will be on Thursday, April third, at seven o'clock. We have another community conversations meeting at Margaret Beeks Elementary School on Tuesday, April eighth, at seven o'clock. We have a special joint meeting with the town of Blacksburg on Thursday, April tenth. The location is yet to be determined for that meeting. And then we have our regular meeting on Monday, April fourteenth. And if things go to schedule, we'll try to have the tax rate and budget on the agenda for that evening for adoption. So, six opportunities in the, in the coming month to, to hear the board. And at the meeting on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, April third, April eighth, and April fourteenth, there'll be opportunities for public address, so.
Okay, Mr., we'll go back to the, you know, the resolution.
At this point, I'm making a motion for, for this body to approve the resolution as proposed.
We've got, got a motion and a second. Now, since it's on, is it any, we beat it to death, but is there any discussion? We have a resolution and a second. And please, now, the resolution, the way it is written here, okay, with the Medicare in it, okay. Now, please call a roll, Madam Chair.
Mr. Gabrielle?
No.
Ms. Perkins?
No.
Ms. Peters?
No, for reasons stated previously.
And Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
No.
We have four noes, three yeses, so we might be close.
Can I make a motion that we pass the resolution without the be it further resolved part that's, that states that the issue of Medicaid expansion under the Affordable Care Act should be decobbled from budget negotiations and considered in a separate legislative session to facilitate prompt passage of a state budget? With that being struck, I would propose the resolution. I think the rest of it's great.
Second. Have a motion and a second, and a discussion.
This one, you know, I know that y'all said that's partisan, but aren't y'all adopting the exact Democratic position that's put forward?
No, we're adopting your position to try to get the, the General Assembly to listen to us to pass the budget.
I, I was just pointing out, isn't that the, the exact...
No.
It's not?
No.
Okay.
I mean, it's just...
What is this?
Well, one of the things that was said was this is a partisan position, that the, the resolution failed. And I was getting ready to say that isn't this position now, taking this out of the budget, isn't that just as partisan?
See, I never said it was partisan, I said that, that was telling them how to do their job. So, I, I'm completely different, I'm saying, we want them to do the part of their job that impacts us, so let's pass the budget at the state level.
If it's going to cause division, if it's going to cause division between this board, let's just scrap the whole thing and just move.
Could not accept a friendly resolution.
I don't think that's a, she's making a motion, I don't think it's friendly enough.
Yeah.
Severate resolution.
Yeah. But with your wording, promising things.
Okay, ready, ready for the question?
Mr. Gabrielle?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Peters?
Aye.
Mr. Kay?
Aye.
Mr. Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Let's make it unanimous, Chris, come on, you can do it.
I was trying to look up your email, but I was saying, because you said you agreed with Matt on it was partisan, so I was just trying. I do want him to pass the budget. I, I do think that this, it's something that they need to do. I'll go ahead and make it unanimous. While assuming that it's chair, I didn't mean to be voting for the chair.
Yes, aye.
Are you ready to adjourn?
On to business.
I guess there's no other business from the Madam Chair, anything?
Oh, I just asked Mr. Meadows if he would just send me the little summary about the parking ride. I'm, I'm working on it.
Yep, I had it written and didn't type it for you, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we are adjourned.
Thanks.